From Holt High School, Ratchet Rocket Robotics Team, please step forward and help lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic which is standing in the nation under our individual, your liberty and justice for all.
Next up, mission statement, if you join me, learning today, leading tomorrow. Next up, recognitions. Curtis.
Mrs. Kramer will lead us through this.
All right, it is my honor to introduce the WSD Robotics Team, the Ratchet Rockers, who earned fifth place overall at the first Robotics World Championships. At the world champion, you gentlemen can come to the stage, gentlemen and ladies. At the World Championships, the Ratchet Rockers competed in ten qualifying matches in the Hopper Division, which consisted of seventy-five teams from most states in the United States and eight countries. The team ended up with ten wins, no losses, and a perfect four-point-oh average, which was the first time any team in any year has accomplished this feat, setting a world record. The team went on to win six elimination matches with their alliance partners and were undefeated to win the Hopper Division Championship. In the final match of the World Championship, the Ratchet Rockers finished in fifth place in the round robin tournament. Congratulations.
That is for you and for the team. Congratulations, we are very proud of you. Now, sometimes people run from this microphone. Is there anything that you want to say to anyone? We're very proud of y'all. Anything you want to say?
Yeah, I'll just say that we're very proud to represent the school district and very thankful for all the support that the school district provides and the facility that we have and the continued support. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Congratulations, all of you. Congratulations. Let's give them another round of applause.
Up next, North Point High School fax teacher Lori Krug won the 2022 Missouri Educators of Family and Consumer Science and Human Services Teacher of the Year Award. This award is given in recognition of her many contributions to the career and technical education. Krug was nominated for her ongoing commitment and dedication to supporting the activities and programs offered within family and consumer sciences education. Congratulations.
Lori, congratulations, that is for you. Very, very proud of you. Anything you want to say to anyone?
Oh, I just want to say, thank you for the support that the school district gives. We have amazing facilities and so thrilled of our new facilities also at North Point High School.
Congratulations.
All right, next up, public forum. Guidelines for public forum are as follows. Each resident of the district requesting time to speak during the public forum will register his or her name, address, and state the issues to be discussed with the recording secretary prior to the meeting being called to order. The board president will call the speakers to the floor. Each speaker shall give his or her name and address upon recognition by the president. Speakers will be allowed three minutes for their presentation unless extended by the board president. If more time is required for presentation, the citizens should consider district policy replacement on the regular meetings agenda. Due to the possible number of speakers during the public forum, the board president may limit or extend the speaking time. If a number of speakers wish to speak on the same topic, the group shall select a spokesman to present that information. A speaker may address the board only once during public forum. Speakers may offer such objective concerns of the school operations as they deem appropriate. The board will not hear personnel complaints or school personnel nor against any person connected with the district in public session. Matters involving personnel shall be discussed by the board in executive session. An employee of the Winsfield School District may address the board by following the public forum guidelines regardless of whether the employee is a resident of the district. Okay, first up, Severin Baum.
Good evening. My name is Severin Baum and I'm an exchange student at North Point High School. I came all the way from Germany by the help of the amazing Youth for Understanding Organization who helped me finding an amazing host family. As this school year comes to an end, I want to say thank you to a few people at my high school. I want to thank Ms. Dockett, my American History teacher, for teaching me so much about America and for letting me present Germany to my classmates. And I wanted to thank Ms. Fleek for being a great person to talk to even to not school-related issues. I am confident to say that this year was the best school year of my life and allowed me to meet so many people, new friends, and of course, my wonderful host family. I wanted to thank Wentzville as a community to welcome me with open hands, from the Walmart cashier who couldn't understand my words with my thick German accent the first day, to the board meeting who allowed me to talk today. Thank you for giving me the time and listening to me tonight. Guten Abend.
Thank you. Next up, Amy Benninghoffen.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, board, thank you for hearing us tonight. I just came to speak a little bit about some things that I've been, I found out about the last couple of weeks. One would be the privilege walk that happened at North Point High School. To say that I was shocked was an understatement. The questions that they had the students ask, you know, in a common area for whoever to see, not just their peers but anyone else, but regardless of that, just the fact that the peers too. These questions are extremely private, could be embarrassing for some students, and I'm pretty sure our students have been through enough the last couple of years. They don't need this kind of pressure put on them. They don't need to be singled out because of the color of their skin or where they grew up. They can't help that. That is not up to them. You know, whether their family has money or their family doesn't have money, or they know someone that's been in prison, whose business is that? None of their peers' business or the teachers for that fact. I mean, I've just had enough. This does not belong in our schools. There is a way to teach our kids about differences than this type of teaching. I went to this school. I had great teachers, and I know that there are a ton of great teachers out there that don't teach like this, but this stuff has to go. It's decisive, it's invasive, and it has no place in these buildings. You know, when I came here, my government teacher, he was wonderful, and I really, and I've always been opinionated, I'm not going to back away from that, yes, I am opinionated. I think we've all realized that now. But I was all, I've always been that way, and my teacher was really, he listened to my opinions, he listened to the opinions of my peers, and he was able to play devil's advocate to each of us. I never knew what any of my teachers were. I didn't know if they were Republican, if they were Democrat, and I didn't care, but they were able to make me think critically by playing devil's advocate, but they didn't just do it to me, they did it to everyone. You know, why are we telling kids that they are, you know, maybe that because of the color of their skin, they're privileged? How do you know that? You don't know what they've been through in the privacy of their home and what kind of life that they've lived and where they've come from. Let's teach kids that they have to get to know one another on a personal level to really know what a person is all about. Let's stop this decisive teaching, let's get back to the basics, our kids are failing, let's get them back to being successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Zabrina Looney.
Good evening, my name is Zabrina Looney. Very brief, so I've been coming to school board meetings for a long time, much more consistently over the last five to seven years. I have raised and sent four of my children through this district. This year, my last one graduates, so I'm free, almost. I grew up about fifteen minutes from here in Warren County, to be more specific, it was Wright City, Missouri. I attended a school system that had policies and structures in place that weren't inclusive, that did not acknowledge me or my experiences. I was referred to as a nigger by my high school teacher. I also have now had conversations with my son that this word is echoed throughout the hallways of this very school. I have always been very active in my children's education and work really hard in hopes that what I experienced, they wouldn't. As I stand here today, a part of me feels as if I have failed them in regards to this. Over the years, many of our stories have mirrored, and as I've watched these last two years fly by, my fear is how many more students will come through this district and be left with the trauma of feeling unseen, unheard, and that they don't matter. Equity matters. Inclusivity matters. Diversity matters. I wish that I can stand here and tell you that I experienced greater things being in a school system that was predominantly not like me, but I didn't. It was harmful to who I was as a person, and so having someone to experience, to at least acknowledge the difference and not be this fake colorblind stuff, see me, see all of me, see where I come from, see my experiences and acknowledge them, that is what I hope for the kids that go through this school district. My kids have had stories, I have attended this school, I've been so many meetings from elementary to middle to high school, have dealt with the aspect of my children not being seen. I've had kids bring a knife onto the school bus, say they were going to stab my son. I have had, the list, I could sit here for days. I've had my son be told by his teacher that slavery was just, eh, they were treated well, they were treated good. We need to do a better job of including all students, all of their experiences, no matter what they look like, even if they don't look like us. They all matter, every one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Don Looney.
Good evening, good evening. I'm Donald Looney, perennial school board candidate at this point. So I anticipate a lot of people here to hear about this decision with the books. It's not what I want to talk about directly, but I will take a moment to speak on the fact that the issue that I have personally with the challenges to those books is that all of the authors of those books happen to be either black, brown, or members of the LGBTQIA+ plus community. Those stories deserve to be heard, those stories deserve to be reckoned with, and they should not be overlooked. Having said that, one of the families that I happen to be pretty close with in our school district is dealing with a lot of bullying, and just through kind of polling the community, I see that there's a lot of that going on, and in a lot of situations, students are being punished for defending themselves, right? So I implore you all to look at our policies and the situations and how we handle these situations so we can keep our kids safe, even if we're keeping them safe from themselves, right? Like, those are the real issues that we really should be spending time on, addressing and dealing with. I understand it probably has to do with a lot, you know, staffing shortages and things of that nature, maybe there just aren't enough people to deal with all of that, but those are the real issues that are affecting our community. It's not the books, it's not what's in the books, has nothing to do with it. So again, I implore you, and then I'll give over the rest of my time, I implore you to take a look at our policies, because as I've often said, a lot of them are archaic and antiquated at best. We need to update our approach to dealing with our children's on a social and emotional level so we can get out in front and deal with these things proactively, because by the time the videos start circulating on the TikToks and the Snapchats, it's too late, and all of us as a community, not just you, but all of us as a community, parents, coaches, teachers, we failed those kids at that point in time, right? So, message is the same for you all, but it's everybody in the building, everybody watching at home on a live stream, like, we got to do better, we got to look out for our kids, because that's really what it's about. All that grandstanding and stuff, we can do that later, okay? I'm done, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Vanessa Hagedorn.
Good evening, I'm Vanessa Hagedorn. Winsfield School District has violated its own board policy 6241. Tonight, I'll be discussing the challenge materials on our agenda, and I'd like to pause to clarify to everyone, this is not about race, this is about content. The challenge materials were submitted October 22nd, 2021. The policy stated that the superintendent was to appoint a review committee in fifteen days of receipt of the challenge material forms. That would have been November 6th, 2021. The policy then states twenty days after that, November 26th now, the committee shall report their recommendations to the superintendent. Lastly, the policy states that the next Board of Education meeting, which would have been December 16th, the superintendent is to report the recommendations of the review committee to the board, at which point then the board would vote to accept or reject the committee recommendations. However, here we are, five months later, the second meeting after the swearing-in of newly-elected board members, and suddenly, the committee recommendations are ready for approval. We are not naive, it's hard for us to believe this was not intentional. Let's refer to state and federal laws. In Chapter 5, 73.010, Missouri Revised Statutes, child is defined as any person under the age of fourteen. Minors define any person less than eighteen years of age. The definition of material includes printed or written. Obscene is defined as, begin quote, "any material or performance that appeals to the perience interest of sex and that the average person would find the material depicts or describes sexual conduct in a patently offensive way and a reasonable person would find the material content lacks serious literary, artistry, political, and scientific value," end quote. We're not talking about National Geographics, images of half-naked people in third-world countries, we're not talking about diagrams showing genitals for science and medical purposes. We are talking about sexually explicit obscene materials. The availability of these books to minors directly violates Missouri federal statutes in regards to promoting, furnishing, and coercing acceptance of obscenities or pornographic materials. Please refer to the Missouri Revised Statutes 573.020 on up through .065. Lastly, I'll share, recent legislation gives cause of action for parents to sue or press criminal charges against school board members.
If you can come to a conclusion, your time is up.
Thank you, I'll finish, sure, you bet. Faculty and staff directly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, Jen Olson.
My name is Jen Olson. In regards to the proposed revision to Board Policy 0412 that's on tonight's agenda, I'm insulted by the elementary attempt to circumvent the Constitution. How much are we paying our district's legal counsel for this garbage? You can't just change the term forum to comment, period, and pretend like it changes the definition of the public's constitutional right to speak before an elected body. The term forum includes any and all allotted periods of time that a governing body designates for the public to address the board, regardless of what you call it. Also, the code of conduct found in Board Policy 1431 does not mention public forum or comment, period. So it seems as though someone along the way understood that the three minutes set aside by an elected body cannot have content-based restrictions due to the fact that it violates our First Amendment right in a limited public forum. Francis Howell Families has successfully litigated their case against their district's violation of the First Amendment, and they are now in the settlement phase. This will end up costing the Francis Howell District close to eighty thousand dollars minimum. Is that the path this district wishes to take? Do you desperately want to muzzle the parents in this community for just a little while longer while we draft up similar lawsuits? The district's legal counsel, as I've said before, is inadequate. Nowhere in FERPA 34 CFR subtitle A, Part 99, as cited in the proposed revisions, does it demand protections for personally identifiable information of the teachers, staff, administration, or board members? In 34 CFR Part 99, the purpose of these regulations is to protect the identity and identifiable information of the child or the parent in regards to identifying a child. It defines in Part 300, personally identifiable as the name of the child, the parent, or other family members in regards to identifying the child. This section of regulation receives its authority from U.S. Code under 20 USC, Chapter 31, Subchapter 3, Subsection 1232G, and 1415, procedural safeguards, in relation to educational records and education of individuals with disabilities. So hypothetically, I can say I was harassed by a fellow parent, John Doe, in the stands at the last football game. That statement has nothing to do with a minor or a minor child or their educational records. Words matter, context matters, the law matters. I have emailed each of you a full text of the statutes and regulations I've mentioned. I ask this board to respect our constitutional right to free speech and go back to the drawing board to make the appropriate and constitution-abiding revisions to Board Policies 0412 and 1431. Thanks.
Thank you. Up next, Amber Crawford.
My name is Amber Crawford. I ask that Item 1228 be removed from the consent agenda. This is the Uncharted Learning Contract. In Section 6, Paragraph D, Page 4 of the agreement, the section essentially states that the education program, lesson plans, and other material related to the program may not be shared with parents. This is not okay. This is an unlawful contract, and the district should not enter any agreement that hides things from parents like they've been doing for the past two, two and a half years. Let's also talk about our district's disgraceful national headlines. At North Point, there was an AP history question. Teresa has learned in the news about the fatal shooting of unarmed African-American men by police officers, but does not think that is necessarily due to racism. The question reads, Teresa is most likely a, one, Democrat, two, Black woman, three, Republican, four, Democrat-leaning woman. And according to the quiz, which was given in an advanced government class, Republican was the correct answer. Think about this divisive and inaccurate question, there's supposed to be an accurate answer. The teachers, staff, and faculty who had knowledge of this content or administered the AP test at Holt High School that garnered our district's national attention should be terminated immediately. The district's completely lack of accountability is infuriating. The excuse it gave to the media was to blame the content creator that you're looking into the matter. Your teacher administered this test, knew the contents of the material. Your teacher needs to be held accountable and terminated. And if the teacher claims they didn't know the content of the material, then terminate them with willful gross negligence and dereliction of their duty to our community and our most precious assets, our children. The teachers, faculty, and staff who has knowledge of or administer the AP test should be terminated immediately. This is nothing more than public shaming based on immutable characteristics and circumstances and a creation of a victimhood mentality where he most likely does not exist. This is child abuse. Why is it so hard to understand about this? They know exactly what they're doing. No more passing the buck. We want the people to be held accountable. Let me remind you that these are our children, not yours. Our children do not belong to this school district. I'm fed up with this lies, manipulation, and gaslighting. We've been right-
Ma'am, if you, you could come to a conclusion.
Yes, I'll wrap it up. We've been right all along. The buck stops with the seven board members on the stage. Get the trash out of our schools, out of our administration, our classrooms, and out of our curriculum. You have allowed our district to be driven into the ground. Fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Lyndy Williford.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Lyndy Williford. I was asked to share this from a parent who wishes to remain anonymous. On Monday, April 25th of this year at North Point High School, my son's third-hour U.S. history class was made to do a privilege walk in the common area of the school. This assignment stemmed from Peggy McIntosh's concept of white privilege. Lined up side by side, the class was told to close their eyes and step forward or backward depending on their response to thirty questions. These questions were divisive and completely inappropriate for children. They divided the kids by socioeconomic issues, sexual orientation, and race. My son felt he had to do this privilege walk because it was worth points and he was trying to maintain his grade. Two children chose to sit out. After the walk, a boy toward the front of the walk said he felt very privileged, to which the teacher responded, "That's because you're a white male." When my son came home and told my husband and I about the privilege walk, he said it was humiliating and racist. He was so uncomfortable having to participate in this assignment. As a parent, I am horrified that my child was made to complete this privilege walk. I believe there is no educational purpose to this at all. All this assignment did was teach the kids to either hate or feel shame or guilt depending on where they ended up at the end of the walk. Knowing that the teachers were made to do this exact privilege walk on a PD day in March shows me this is not a rogue teacher. When the principals had to do the same walk at Central Office, this tells me it comes straight from the administration and our superintendent. These thirty questions were provided to me by the teacher through her WSD email account. When you hear these questions and scenarios, please ask yourself how comfortable you would feel answering these questions in front of your peers as an adult. For context, stepping forward means you're privileged and stepping back means you're oppressed. If you were ever told by your parents that you were beautiful, smart, or successful, take one step forward, you're privileged. If you almost always see members of your race, sexual orientation, religion, and class widely represented on television, in the newspaper, and in the media in a positive manner, take one step forward- manner, take one step forward. You're privileged. If you almost always feel comfortable with people knowing your sexual orientation, you're privileged. Stepping back, if you grew up in an economically disadvantaged or single-parent home, take one step back because you're oppressed. If anyone in your immediate family has ever served time in state or federal prison, take one step back. You're oppressed too. If anyone in your immediate family has ever been addicted to drugs or alcohol, take one step back. You're oppressed. I'm in the process of filing a PPRA complaint as this privilege walk violates nearly every single category and the Protection of Peoples' Rights Amendment. I ask that the Board investigate this and make certain none of our students are subjected to this assignment again. I have copies of the entire privilege walk. If anyone in the audience wants a copy, please see me after. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Brandon McNamie.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me do this. Alright, so typically it's my wife that, let me get this real quick, sorry. Typically, it's my wife that gets involved, and I've recently decided to kind of dive in and listen to her, which I probably should have done a while ago. Looking around, it's kind of sad how empty this whole place really is, to be honest. So we kind of need to start promoting these a little more. But from what I understand, the proposed solution here tonight is to allow certain books with a permission slip from their parents. So the same solution there was for the bluest eye. The issue that my wife and I have with that is that some of us have children that will be denied that permission. Our children will, of course, still be subjected to this material by their peers, whether it's on the bus, the hallways, wherever. But most importantly, they'll be privy to the fact that this is allowed by the librarians, it's allowed by the teachers, it's allowed by the staff, the principals. Those are people that they're told to trust and listen to. So some will argue, obviously, children have access to the internet, all sorts of adult content on their smartphones super easily, obviously. But it's a lot easier to explain to our children that certain material they find on social media, that they find on the internet, that we can tell them that's wrong. That's not stuff they should be, they should be, you know, reading or looking at. It's a lot more difficult to tell them the material they're allowed access to at school by those we tell them to, you know, to trust and abide by is wrong. So I get there's a lawsuit going on, I get there's all this stuff going on, it's a lot easier to just kind of sweep it under the rug and, you know, give in, not make things worse, but it's about right or wrong, and this is just, this is wrong. It's wrong. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Glenn Becker.
Hello, I'm Glenn Becker. For three years, I've been up here asking you guys to do an IT audit, close your IT infrastructure, and follow your own policies. None of those three things were done. So I'm going to change the game here a little bit. I'm going to ask each of the Board members to please raise your hand as I ask you some questions. If you don't feel comfortable answering them, while on YouTube, just go ahead and put your hands down. At the end of it, if you answered all the questions, I will give you each that answered a $100 bill. It's just that easy. Nobody? It's not a privilege walk I'm asking you to do. These are simple questions. This is data you guys released online about our students. So I'll go ahead and read these off. Would you be willing to give your full legal name of your children? Full first name, full last name, and full middle name of your children on YouTube? Would you be willing to give out their phone number? Home phone number? Would you be willing to give out their email address? Would you be willing to give out their student ID number? That's their password, by the way, here in the Wentzville School District. Would you be willing to list off personal characteristics of your child while on YouTube? I'm including race, grade, ethnicity, gender, nationality, and language that they speak. Would you be willing to list off their economical disadvantaged status? Would you be willing to list off their migration status, or if they speak English as their primary language? Would you be willing to list off if they've ever been homeless? Would you be willing to list their disabilities or their accommodations or medical records that the school currently has on them? No? No takers? Would you be willing to list what school they're currently in and the date that they were enrolled? Would you be willing to list their coursework and their grades and who their instructors were? And finally, would you be willing to list their test scores that they just took on the EOC and the MAP testing? Anybody willing to answer any of those questions while on YouTube? I opted out of your RUP. I opted out of your directory information, and yet all of this information was given to multiple companies because of this district. Because your instructors went around your IT policy where it says you're supposed to vet everything and used applications that asked these questions and stored them in a database. Including my favorite one, and that is your socioeconomic status. Do your parents own debit cards, credit cards? Do you know how much are on them? These organizations have, I have found my kids' information on, NWEA, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and the BLM organization all have my kids' information, including mine. And it's because you guys have yet, after three years, not locked down your infrastructure. You have not followed your own policies.
If you could come to a conclusion.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and thank you for allowing me to keep my $100.
Okay, that ends public forum. Up next, consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and amended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Next up, superintendent reports.
Yes, actually, before we dive into superintendent reports, I did want to speak to an item that had been addressed in the past. We've talked about this. We've actually provided multiple press releases. Not only a press release, a release to our parents in terms of our thoughts as related to that particular item. And then we also provided a copy of an email that came from the vendor, providing some rationale in terms of what happened. I think it is critically important that we continue to work to make sure that all of our classroom spaces, all of our learning spaces are fair and safe places for all of our students. Regardless of walk that they come into, if they cross our threshold, they're a student in the Wentzville School District. And we need to keep making efforts and working toward making sure that that is not only true today, but that it's true tomorrow. Specifically, when we're talking about government classes, that is a space where it is appropriate to have conversation about political beliefs and ideology. But as I said in the statement to our parents, when it came to a particular item, I feel as though it was, and the district feels as though it was inappropriate, it was extreme, and it was divisive. The question is wrong. Period. And so, working to have contact with the publisher, and I want to speak with them directly because I have some questions that I want answers to. And not only in the short term, direct questions and answers to what has occurred, but looking forward, what safeguards are we going to be having in place so that this is something that we are not experiencing? I think it's really important that our parents understand, if there are questions that you have in terms of what's happening in the classroom, please reach out to our teachers. Our teachers want to be able to have that dialogue, to have that conversation, to have that context in terms of what's going on, and issues and conversations can occur. If that's not reaching the solution, there are other steps that we can take in terms of additional conversations as relates to chain of command, literally, in terms of working toward providing the answers to those questions. Teaching students to think critically is important, but teaching students how to think critically is very different than teaching students what to think in terms of ideology and belief. And so, there's a lot that's going on and continues to go on in a variety of places, including in the Wentzville School District. But I just wanted this Board, since it's on YouTube, for this community to also just hear some of these thoughts in terms of what we're thinking, what we're moving forward with, not only today, but moving forward as a district as well. And so, I know it's not typical that this happens during superintendent report, but given some of the energy and conversation that's been out there, I think it's important that people be able to hear this. Regardless if the child is chartreuse with purple polka dots, if they cross our threshold, that's a child in the Wentzville School District, and it is our job to go to work with that child. But we need to make sure everyone, regardless of what they do, where they're from, who they are, everyone is feeling safe in terms of what we're doing in the district. But our teachers cannot address something if they're unaware of it. And so, we have to get back to having those conversations between families, teaching staff, building staff, so that we can address issues if and when they in fact happen. Our staff really work diligently to meet the needs of students every single day, and I don't want that loss. But it's really important that we continue to just get back to what we've done and continue to have this dialogue. We need an educated populace, right? We need one. This district, the state, and this nation needs one. But we have to find a way to keep moving forward and not address some of the, and not have some of the issues that we've had in the past. With that, I'll stop talking, but I wanted to share those thoughts.
Thank you for that.
President Bryce, may I have the floor, please, just real quick?
Yes, you may.
Have a comment or question. Dr. Kane, you and I have had a discussion in recent days. I was hoping, given what's happened, you could talk to the Board about revisiting the faculty handbooks and if there are any shortcomings that need to be addressed, that would be appreciated.
So in terms of our handbooks, procedures, and processes, there are reviews that occur over the course of the summer to prepare for the next school year. That happens on an annual basis. Every confidence, that's in fact what's going to be happening this upcoming summer as well. It's just a part of our traditional process in terms of what we do and how we go about doing it. And so, I would make an assumption that that in fact will be happening this summer as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, in terms of other superintendent reports, we will start with the federal programs, sorry, federal programs evaluation, and Dr. Skeeters will leave his presentation.
Good evening. You've all been provided with the full program evaluation report through the Board Packet. So tonight, I'm just going to hit the highlights of the federal programs. The district receives federal funding under Title I, Title II, Title III. Title III is broken into two parts, Title III ELL, Title III Immigrant, and under Title IV. The funds under Title I are specifically designated to improve the academic achievement of disadvantaged. We are a school-wide system, so that means our Title I funds may be used to service students schoolwide. Title II, we use primarily to provide professional learning for all staff and also in particular for staff who are non-certificated, in addition to our administrators. It also supports the use of assessments. We have an assessment coach and intervention coach that are paid for through these funds. Title III, those funds are used to provide support to our teachers who service students who are English language learners. They also provide support to all teachers who may work with students who are English language learners. And finally, Title IV, it's sort of an interesting fund. It combines a few different things. One is it supports the safe and healthy child, so there's a whole number of things that can fall under there. Specifically this year, supporting counselors attending conferences, supporting transition programs for the sixth grade transitioning into the middle school, for ninth graders transitioning into high school. And also provides funds for a well-rounded education, looking at expanding programming in a variety of capacities, fine arts, world languages, and areas like computer science. And finally, it supports additional technology, professional learning around technology, and also there's a specific amount of money that can be used to purchase technology. Can you advance for me? Thank you. Our goals for coming into this year, we had four goals there. Two of them, we indicated are ongoing. That is due to the fact that, first of all, they are important enough to continue to work on every year. The first one being providing systematic differentiated small group instruction to all students in grades K-5 in the areas of reading and mathematics. Over the summer last year, we invested time and funds in learning more about small group instruction, and we carried that learning throughout the year. That was a little difficult, given the limitations of the pandemic. However, our teachers really invested in that learning. We will continue to focus on this because we believe that this is critical to helping students achieve at high levels, all students. We, the second one that was ongoing is that last one listed there, monitor, analyze, and utilize student performance data to meet the needs of all students through regularly scheduled collaboration and administrator-facilitated team meetings. These collaborative teams, that's a goal for our department to continue to work on to develop those, to make them stronger and more effective. So we just, that goal we indicated is ongoing. The second goal there, provide professional learning and collaboration time for school leaders, district building coaches, and classroom teachers in Title I buildings to ensure high-quality instruction occurs for all students. We did not meet that goal. Given the limitations of the pandemic this year, we were unable to bring staff together in the way we had hoped to do to meet this goal. So that is something that we will have to continue to work on. And finally, the third goal there, ensure that intervention services and Tier One instructional practices are supported by systematic and purposeful building instructional schedules. We didn't meet that. We put specific guidelines in place for how instructional time is used. We monitored then the development of the schedules and the implementation of the schedules, so we met that goal this year. This is just a few highlights for how the title programs, title funds were used this year. I mentioned a few of these as we went through in the explanation of the funds. I just want to point out just a couple others. One is the therapeutic programming. Pierce Hall implemented horticultural therapy this year. Title IV funds were used to support that endeavor going into this year. It's been incredibly successful for the students there. And also, the expansion of computer science curriculum to the elementary level. We are using Title IV funds also to expand that programming down to our elementary students. And I think most of those, the rest of those are, oh, and student-centered coaching development, that came out of Title II. So last year, we've provided you with some images of some things that happened and that are funded through some of our title programming. So reading intervention is the primary source of our Title I funding. So you can see some photos there of students working with some reading interventionists from the district. In addition, I'd like to highlight the fact that these reading interventionists, they're highly trained, highly skilled individuals, and they share that training with teachers in their buildings. So on the most recent Professional Development Day, these two individuals who are pictured here, who are helping students, were then helping teachers learn more about the sounds that letters make and how your mouth, how you move your mouth, parts of your mouth to help with letter formation so that they can help their students in that small group instruction that we were talking about earlier. So they work with both students and with teachers to help all of our students be successful. And then pictured here are some of our students who are in our ELL programming. Our ELL programming consists of both push-in support and pull-out support. We have teachers who travel to our various buildings, and depending upon where students fall in their skill level with the English language, teachers are providing support by pushing into their classroom and/or by pulling them out and working on targeted skill development. And finally, these are our proposed goals for going into next year. They look awfully familiar because they are the ones that we either did not meet this year or that they are ongoing because we have not fully met them. So providing that systematic differentiated small group instruction, monitoring, analyzing, and utilizing performance data to meet the needs of all students through collaboration and administrator-facilitated team meetings, and then providing professional learning and collaboration time for those school leaders, our building and district coaches, classroom teachers, and our Title I buildings to ensure that high-quality instruction continues to incur. That's all I have. Got any questions? Do you have any questions?
President Bryce, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Dr. Skeeters, I know you talked a lot about the reading intervention work that our that our staff is doing. I just wanted you to share with us, you know, Senate Bill 681. It calls for reading success plan, should that, you know, should the governor sign that. Can you can you talk to us about how your department is preparing the district for that?
So we've been watching that reading intervention bill, and it's many changes and phases and different numbers throughout the entire legislative session. And so the staff who work closely with Title I in particular, but with reading in our district, they have been aware of this. I've been sending them the updates as we've been receiving updates in regard to that to that bill. So we've been monitoring it. It has changed quite a bit through each iteration. And so while we are aware and we are preparing, because this was just finalized on Friday, we don't we don't have all of the plans established. We will be prepared, though, by the time the children walk back through the door on August 22nd. There are a lot of things that we already have in place that we do to meet individualized needs of students. We look at, we we talk about individual students. We talk about their reading progress, and we create strategies and plans within our, within the school already. So we would just need to look at this bill a little bit more closely and understand exactly what the expectations are for those plans, and then we would we would address that at that time.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
All right, up next, budget update. Mr. Angivine.
Thank you. The purpose of this presentation this evening is to inform you of two things. The first would be to inform you of our current budget and where we stand within our current budget. The second is to tell you how the construction of next year's budget is going and where that stands. On the screen right now, the information I'm giving you is related to the current budget of which we are under right now and the one that will end, this budget will end on June 30th. And that's the original 2021-22 operating budget. When this budget was put together, it included a deficit, anticipated deficit of $1.2 million. The district is anticipating a 2021-22, even though it was budgeted as a deficit of $1.2 million. We are planning and hopefully getting an operating surplus of $1.5 to $5 million exclusively of potential fund transfers. If I had to guess right now, as things are changing, I put this presentation together one week ago, and already it looks like we could exceed even the $5 million surplus that is on this screen right now. That being said, the question comes up, well, what does that mean to our operating fund balance? We expect a year-end operating fund balance percentage in the range of 25% to 27%. If we would have had the deficit of $1.2 million, we would have had an original budget fund balance percentage of 23.16%. Going on to next year's budget. This year, we are making our budget. Next year budget, we are current, we entering that into our systems, and we're currently computing it for '22 and '23. The revenue and expense projections have not significantly changed since the March budget presentation, which I gave to this board. But what that means is all the items on that document are pretty much the same. There are no material differences. And that means we are currently planning to submit a balanced budget to the board in June. A couple reminders here, as we have new board members, and I want to make sure everybody understands the process at this particular point. DESI recommends that school boards adopt the budget at the last meeting of the Board of Education prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. That means DESI recommends that to be in our June board meeting. And there are statutory provisions that require the board approve our school budget by June 30th. That is a statutory provision, and that is required. What that, what I'm trying to say is that the budget as presented to the board in March and reiterated in this presentation is well underway. It's over a 100-page budget. Any changes would need to be made in time to implement them before the June board meeting. That means if anyone has any changes to anything that they've seen in the March presentation or know of anything that needs to be changed in this budget or want to plan to change anything in the budget, we would know, have to know immediately because generally, one change in that budget could easily change 30 to 40 pages in that presentation and in that budget that you will be receiving. Again, it is a balanced budget, and I plan to move forward with it at this particular point in time. Now, this is a budget update, and no recommendation is being made to the board at this time, and I'm available to answer any questions.
President Bryce. Rick, can you speak to the the variation of the surplus from one and a half to five? What's going to cause us to land in that range? What factors are still open?
Certainly. What's causing us to to be in that range? One of the largest factors we have is food service. Food service federal funding is at an amazing rate that I did not expect to be at when we put this budget together. Foods, the federal government is paying us more money for a meal than we were even charging. And that's necessary because our food costs have gone up also. But but the fact of the matter is, with the with the federal funding that we're we're getting right now, not only is the federal government paying for the meals, when the students are not paying for the meals themselves, more students come in for those meals at lunch. Not only that, students are getting breakfast now that they didn't get before because now the breakfast is free. That federal funding is extremely large and is causing a major surplus in what we had budgeted. Another item, the second largest item that's causing a a major surplus is Prop C. And what Prop C is, that is the the sales tax money that we get here in the district. We get sales tax money based on a per-student basis. The larger the school you are in Missouri, the larger your sales tax dollar number is. During the pandemic and as we were coming out of the pandemic, I read as many financial, as much financial news as I could find. And I did not expect the gross national product and sales and and revenues from sales taxes to go up tremendously. I actually budgeted it to go down slightly. Now, since our sales tax money from the state is going up extremely high, that's also resulting in federal, several, federal, excuse me, several governmental agencies from also having more funds than they expected. And it's also coming back our direction because the amount we're getting per student now is more than we ever expected on the sales tax side. Those are the the two largest areas. The other, the other is our assessed values. Property prices are going up higher than than we had expected. Home prices are going up higher, and as new homes come in, our assessed value taxes are coming in better than we had assumed. So actually, the, to answer your question in a, in a round matter, is that it's on the revenue side that we're being positive and not, and yeah, it is on the expense side also, but those revenue figures are causing us to be very favorable. And I could see us being more favorable than the $5 million that we're at right now.
Thanks, Rick.
Any more questions? All right, thank you, Rick. Up next, we're going to do a first reading of policy 0412.
Yeah, President Bryce, if I may. Yeah, I think I think this one, Dr. Kane, I think there was some additional suggested changes that didn't make it into this version, I think, that need to be distributed. But I I think, which had legal counsel's review. And so I'd expect on the next turn to have that language updated. There was some, there was some citation around some specific statutory requirements in Missouri and some of our own policies as well. So I think that came in late is why it didn't make it in here, but that was my only comment.
President Bryce, I have a question. So you said this was a first reading, but the packet says that we're looking for a motion. Are you asking to to postpone the vote on this one?
Yes. I guess I would ask for the motion to postpone this.
Yeah, motion to postpone the approval of policy 0412 until our next regular scheduled meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Seven oh. Next up, new business. We need a motion to approve the 4894 agreement as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Jennifer, is there any discussion on this?
No, we had a good bargain with 4894. They are in the middle of a three-year contract. So we negotiate three language openers with them and economics every year in between that three-year agreement. That is what we did, and they ratified this agreement.
Any discussion from the board?
I have a question just for clarification. So salary increases will be negotiated again next year at approximately this time?
Yes, so it happens about the same time every year. So we start conversations when Rick starts to get the budget numbers predicted in a in a good enough amount that we can predict what it is that we're able to do for employees. And that starts to happen around December, January. And then we start to schedule meetings with our groups starting in February. And so it's it's a cycle that we go through every year.
Any more questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion passes. Next up, we need a motion to approve the WNEA nurse agreement as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Jennifer?
We had a, again, a good bargain with the nurses. You'll see that theirs looks a little bit different. So most of it is notes and kind of commitments that we've made together, shared goals that we have developed together going forward. And then there's some language that is going to change in the book regarding vacancies. Their book will be open for full negotiation next year. So this is the last year of their in-between agreement, and then they will have a full bargain next year.
Any questions? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion passes. Next up, we need a motion to approve the administrator and non-union pay increases as presented. Jennifer? Or sorry, motion?
Yes, we are recommending at this time that, as you see in our packet, that the pay increases and items listed for the administrators and non-union pay increases be accepted by the board.
Okay, we need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing no questions, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Up next, we need a motion to approve the 2022 HVAC upgrades as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. I had this pulled from Consent Agenda. As you see listed on there is an HVAC contractor that we have worked with in the past. They were $7,000 over our lowest bid. They pulled this out of a bind last winter in fixing a boiler that a couple of other companies said that could not be fixed, and we had no downtime. They fixed it and were able to do the work in the summer, which saved us a lot of money. For that, I think we should really consider using this company and spending the $7,000 that have worked in our district, and we know what they're capable of as to where this other company has done no work in the district, and we're not sure of what they're capable of. Do any other board members have any discussion?
Yeah, question, President Bryce. Maybe it's a question for you, Rick, I guess. Is it, so we have not used DECA service before for HVAC? Is that a new vendor for us?
I'm going to ask John Blanton to go ahead and step in and confirm whether we have or have not used them. They are here to help on on this particular item.
If we're talking about the DECA, the boilers, I did the background check that was given. They gave reference of other school districts, and the other school districts confirmed that they've done very good work with them. One of the districts is currently using them as a contracted service ongoing through the whole year.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Nay. Motion passes. Up next, we need a motion to approve the recommendation of Challenge Materials Committee to retain Heavy, An American Memoir by Keith Layman.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Carrie, do you have anything you would like to add to this? Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, hearing no questions, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay.
Nay.
That's six one, motion passes. Up next, we need a motion to accept the recommendation of the Challenge Materials Committee to retain All Boys Aren't Blue by George Johnson.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Okay, hearing no discussion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay.
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 Motion passes. Up next, we need a motion to accept the recommendation of the Challenge Material Committee to retain Lawn Boy by Jonathan Ebison.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, hearing no discussion, we have a motion and a second.
Sorry, sorry, I was waiting. Okay, so for Lawn Boy, the committee decision is to retain, however, in-person votes are just six of all of the committee members. It says, "Three community members appointed to the committee did not submit feedback or attend the meeting to participate in the discussion or vote." I don't feel we can make a decision at this time based on an incomplete review.
Carrie, can you speak to the the meeting itself and the committee and the lack of participation at all?
So the
So the committee was notified. They, the people who agreed to participate, they were notified at the meeting. They were provided the, the book, the dates, all of the information. They were called, they were emailed, and did not, did not show to participate. So two of, two of the three did not. One did say that they would not be in attendance.
I would say send, I don't know the legalities of this. I apologize for the formalities, but I say we send it back to committee.
So we have a motion on the table. So we'll have to vote on that motion. And if that fails, then we would be able to make another motion.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
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 Roll call.
Roll call, Catherine, please.
Director Elizak?
Nay.
Director Stoli?
Aye.
Director Scott?
Aye.
Vice President Goodson?
Nay.
President Bryce?
Nay.
Secretary Abbott?
Aye.
Director Bates?
Aye.
We have a four, three. Motion carries.
Up next, we need a motion to accept the recommendation of the challenged material committee not to retain Fun Home, a family traumatic, sorry, tragicomic by Allison Becca Dole.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Can I make a, can I, sorry, can I make a quick comment?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I support where the committee's at. I think the one thing when I was reading this that, that I think we should echo and, or at least it went into my decision-making around this. There's a Senate bill that's supposed to be signed 775. And I think as it relates to sexually explicit material, which I think they're citing some of that in the committee's recommendation. I think this book specifically fits in there. And so as I think about my decision and vote here, that's something that I always considered of as well.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Six one. Eyes have it. Motion passes. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn and go back into closed session for personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion?
We gotta have a, gotta have a motion, but.
Sorry, we, we need a motion to go in.
I make a motion to go in closed session for reasons of legal, personnel, and negotiations.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.